All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome our citizens to our city council meeting this evening for June sixth. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order at six P M. And before we get started here and call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid ground rule meetings and then then call roll. Stephanie?
All right. Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Red Brink?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Oh, David Fettow?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
Ken Stoker?
Here.
Stephanie, with that, I'll ask Councilmember Fettow if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Fettow. Much appreciated. Council, the agenda is before us this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Council. We have two presentations this evening, and the first one is going to be from Visit Tri-Cities and as well as the introduction to the new president and C E O of Visit Tri-Cities, Kevin Lewis. Welcome to the City of West Richland City Council Chamber, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to meet with the council and finally introduce myself here. I've been up here for six months now. Was recruited by the search firm that was looking for to replace the C E O out up here after Michael Novakovich left and I was working in St. George, Utah at the time as the tourism director down there. And for some reason, they spotted me and thought that I might be a good fit up here. We started down the road and, you know, through some interviews and discussions, I got more and more intrigued by the opportunity up here and it's exciting to be here and I've been here six months now and I feel like I'm starting to get my sea legs. Got a really good feel for the area and the wonderful opportunities that there are here in tourism and most importantly, the great people that there are here. I everywhere I've been, I've just run into people who have just been very welcoming and enthusiastic. I love the culture and the spirit of discovery that's here. I think this is a place that's built on the exploration. And and so that's sort of what we're going to build on is is the the real natural community elements here, this this cultural pursuit of discovery and as we as we create the messaging and and information that goes out to the world about the Tri-Cities, that's what we'll base it on is that real core feeling of the people and the energy that's here and then and then we'll sell sell them on all of the great attractions and things there are. I I've been running around all day today with a representative from a group, the National Horseshoe Pitchers. And I don't know if you knew that there's a World Horseshoe Tournament, but we're we're getting very close to securing that event. That's a two week event that happens in July and they move that around the country every year and and so we we made connections with them and then got them out here and I think there's a pretty good shot that we might host that in twenty twenty four. So that could be a fun little event because they they come in and we would host that event in the Toyota Center. They they pitch over the course of two weeks. These people are coming in and then while they're not pitching, they're out in our restaurants and enjoying our activities and doing all those kinds of things. So nice. We'll we'll see them at the wineries. We took them to a few of those today, too, and so they're getting a good a good taste of what this place is all about. But anyway, what I'm here for is is to present our twenty twenty two annual report and, you know, I I wasn't around for the twenty twenty two activities, but I get to share it all. And so let's just kind of talk through some of this. If you'll just click the slides through. First thing is just sort of give you an overview really of our organization and, you know, the state of our organization, the state of the industry. And just really briefly, I think our organization's in good shape. We've got some really good core people that are with the organization still. We have had a nice little churn of staffing over the over the time since the C E O left until until now. And so we're kind of rebuilding some of it, but we got a really good core or to our organization, some real solid people that many of you know. Gretchen Guerrero, Hector Cruz, I don't know if you've connected with them in different different areas. There are two vice presidents and in in this core group is really, really growing and we had a retreat yesterday as a team and 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 started to push forward on the vision and direction that we're going to head with the with the new team. As far as the industry goes, tourism has certainly been a dynamic spot in the the economic world, you know, in the, you know, two years ago, twenty twenty one, they were pretty odd years for tourism as the world kind of shut down with the pandemic. Things shifted and and focuses shifted as we put our communities back together, but coming out of the pandemic, this area has done really, really well. Twenty twenty one was almost sort of a I like to call it revenge travel happened in twenty twenty one. People needed to get out, wanted to get out, and they came to places where they like this, where there were open spaces and they could get get involved in in their back to their normal life again. And so we had a good year in twenty one and twenty two has continued that. And as we look forward to twenty three, we're looking pretty good, continuing to build off of that. Although with the inflation and those kinds of things, there are some things in the, you know, in the world that are kind of slowing things down a bit. Travel is is a bit more expensive and there's still some new dynamics with the group. You know, business, business, travel and and meetings and conventions, which are still working their way back to to full scale. So you'll click through. I'll show you some of the data. Just really quickly, though, with our organization. In our strategic plan, we have four strategic pillars that we base everything we do off of. Sales and marketing is one. That's where we reach out, try to bring the people into the area. Collaborative destination development as we work together with your community and the other communities in the area to build this destination and make it a better place for people to live and for people to visit. And those two go hand in hand. If it's a good place to visit, it's a good place to live and vice versa. Proactive community engagement. We like to be out in the community, sharing our message, telling the good story. I think that's the one thing that we get to do that some organizations don't have as much opportunity to do is we get to share the good. We celebrate all the fun and good things that go on here. And so we get out in the community and do that. And we try to be involved in the visioning and planning and and development of of the community. And so we'll want to work with your your city as much as we can and be proactive in that engagement. The last thing in our pillar is just this innovation in our organization. It's not that we're going to chase every shiny bell and whistle out there, but we want to be streamlined in our efforts and do things effectively and have the tools that we need to to be you know, up up to speed and up to date and current and what we're doing. And and then we want to be able to report that effectively, too. And so you'll see some of the numbers that we're working through today as we as we go through some of this. Next slide. Just just kind of a philosophical, how I view tourism. I see it as the big big end of the economic development funnel. And and what we do is we bring people to the area, any business that's going to come here, any family that's going to move here, any any of that, they're going to visit here first. And so that's what tourism is, is that big end of the funnel. And then as they get here and they experience all of the things there are to do and the good people and that, like I've experienced, they work their way down that funnel and then more and more and more dollars become invested into the communities and and we we become more attractive. Next slide. This shows you kind of the data that we we did over twenty twenty two. So direct visitor spending was actually up twenty one percent over twenty twenty one. That's this this top bar that we're going across. Total economic impact was up eighteen percent. Direct employment up twenty percent. And the total jobs created by the tourism industry was up fourteen percent in twenty twenty two. So that's a good trend, all of those numbers going up. Some of that spending, economic impact in that has a little bit to do with inflation, obviously. It costs more to do things and so those you know, the costs go up, but the other things, the direct employment, the jobs and stuff, those are those are really helpful to our to our our economy. The bottom graph there is just the state of Washington and I won't I won't go through the data there, but you can see it is growing across the state, too. Next slide. This is the hotel motel dollars and cents of things. Our hotel revenues are up about four hundred twenty eight thousand in twenty twenty two. And you can see the cities, the tax revenue that's coming in through hotels. And why is that important to us? Because that's one of the ways that we bring economics into the community and how we help develop the community is through those those tax revenues that help offset taxes that our residents would have to pay. It's also important to us as an organization because that's how we're funded. We get a percentage of the hotel tax and then we also have the hotels have agreed to create what's called a tourism performance area where they will assess their guests a fee to stay and then that goes toward the marketing development of tourism in the area. And so that's that's important to us to you know, our 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 real purpose is really to bring people here to get them to stay in hotels and that keeps the whole thing moving. That's not the sexy part of it, but that's that's kind of the bottom line there. Next slide. We do a lot, like we said, sales and marketing, advertising is a big part of it. And in twenty twenty two, our tourism campaigns brought in about twenty two million impressions and sixty three thousand click throughs are that's direct to, you know, if we if we put a message out there, they directly came to our site and started exploring our website. Page views have increased, unique visitors are up and our kiosk sessions, we have kiosks around the area in the visitor center and the airport, a few other places. Those those sessions are increased as well. And then our media outreach with our social media has also gone up in in all categories. We're getting into some technology where we're we're going to be better able to track. Not only did they come for our website, but did they actually show up in the area? And next year, I hope to be able to report that kind of data a lot better so that we can actually see when somebody saw one of our ads and then three months later, they showed up at a winery or a hotel or an attraction or whatever, you're actually able to track that through. That sounds a little big brotherish and it kind of is. But it's it's aggregated data. We don't know who they are. We just know that that this device saw something and it ended up here and we don't know have have any connection to that. It's interesting how the technology has grown where you can do that with digital advertising. And and so we're utilizing those tools to better track our effectiveness and and be able to report on that. Next up. One of the big areas that we focus on is is conventions and sporting events, and those are huge draws to us. You can see our the number of conventions rose from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. We're bringing that market back up a hundred and nine percent. The visitors attracted through conventions, you know, up sixty three percent. And then the sports and convention spending in the region was was up a hundred percent from the previous year. So we've got that back on track. Got some good things going on and 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 we're reaching out to some other groups like this horseshoe group that I talked about to try and bring some more signature type events, some of these raise the level of of the the events that come and we don't get me wrong, the events that are coming here are fantastic and we'll continue to attract those, but we'd like to see some of these kind of, I call them signature events. The ones that will draw media attention to the area and we can we can showcase and and gain some more credibility for the area in the in what we're able to accomplish and what we have here. Next slide. Our our marketing team is involved in a lot of publications. I think we passed out our visitor guide, the new one that goes out this year. We do an annual report and a golf guide and a wine map and all kinds of collateral that gets distributed as people request that information. We also share this information with people who are trying to relocate or interested in relocating, and that's one of the kind of underlying benefits of our organization is that we're helping people figure out what to do and why they should come here and work here. Our our organization is involved in in destination development as well. And this is, again, we we talked about this is one of the key pillars that we have, but we have, as part of our organization, we brought together the Tri-Cities River Shore Enhancement Council. And that's a group that is has been working for years to make sure that we're developing the river shore and and making it better and better. And so we're involved. We we tend to be kind of a convener where we we help bring the organizations, agencies and entities together that have influence in those areas. We're not responsible for them, but we we help bring them together to keep keep moving that forward. As you know, this area was designated as a American World War Two Heritage City. One of, I think there's thirty seven in the country right now and there's only one available in each state. We were we were awarded that in our state. And so we're going to do more to promote and market and share that story because we have an incredible World War Two history here. Some great stories to tell. And so that's a nice, nice benefit there. And along with that, we also have organized and Mayor Gary is the chair of our National Park Committee. And that's bringing bringing the agencies and entities together to help celebrate and market and promote the National Park and and we're trying to do some some big stuff right now is as we're looking ahead to the the closure of the B reactor for some preservation work next year. We want to do some work now to get ready for that so that we can continue to tell that story. So we're talking about three sixty video tours that would be available and then those could be used even after it opens up again. But some other events and things to really tie that story together and 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 help the public understand what that is. There's a really, you know, I guess we've got a really neat kind of thing going on right now. There's a there's a a little bit of a swell in interest in the Manhattan Project right now because there's a big movie coming out next month, the Oppenheimer Film. If you've seen a trailer for that, you you know, that's pretty exciting. Christopher Nolan and and all of the cast that's going to be in there. We don't know what that movie is going to be about and what what kind of a story it's going to tell exactly, but we know there's a swell of interest. And so we're trying to take advantage of the eyeballs that are aware of that right now and help share our story in the way we want to share it. Next up. We also, like we talked about, you're involved in community engagement and a couple of things, areas. CPC Co. is one of our sponsors for our organization and they have a program called the Thriving Life Program where we just help celebrate what's going on in the community. We have a program that's called Your Weekend Starts Here. Talks about all the events and activities that are going on. It's a video based promotion that we send out via social media and that. Some other things like that. And then we also have a program that was established a few years ago within the organization called Try Ideas, which celebrates diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility. And so we're just trying to understand and learn and welcome all people here and and be aware of of, you know, the opportunities that are available for the different cultures and types of people that that are around. So so that's how we're getting involved in the in the community, a couple of the ways that we're doing that. Next slide. Uh, we're we're very big into visual storytelling and want to show you some stuff that was developed towards the end of last year and we just released it in our advertising campaign. So if you go to the next slide and if this all works, you'll get to see a couple of our commercials that are playing. So just hit play on that. It should.
Cash in on that stored up vacation time and enjoy a holiday in the sun with so many activities. Explore our hiking and biking trails. Or take a horseback ride through our scenic vineyards. Whatever you decide, it's sure to be incredible. Find your adventure. Plan your trip at visittrycities.com. Try an adventure in the sun. Try Three Rivers. Try three hundred days of blue skies. Experience Washington's Tri-Cities. From farm to table to food trucks, enjoy a burgeoning culinary scene. Day trips, river dips, golf trips and wine sims. Horseback and backpack. We have it all. Plan your trip at visittrycities.com.
Some really good footage there. It's a little staticky as you see it. When it plays over Zoom, it tends to do that. But if you go online, you can watch that on our site and see them in, you know, real smooth motion or whatever. But boy, this is a beautiful area. I mean, it showcases really well when you can get get that drone up and and look at that river and see those vineyards and, you know, we just have so many neat little things. It's been fun for me because you you know, like in the last couple of days, going around with this horseshoe group and showing them some of these little pockets of really, really neat. We went down to, you know, a couple of restaurants we've been to and out to some of the vineyards and things like that and to see their reaction as they see what's out there is really kind of fun. I think that's one of the funnest parts of this job is is introducing people for the first time to something that they would they didn't expect. And and that's what I think I found here more than anything is it's it's more of an unexpected and sometimes unimaginable experience that you have here. Some really, really great opportunities. And so I'm excited to be here, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and and share a little bit about what we're doing with the council. Open to any questions, too, or any any ideas you might have.
Thank you, Kevin. Much appreciated. So I have seen these types of ads before when I've been traveling around the state and out of the state. So can you give me an idea of what kind of coverage you're using these these commercials?
Yeah. So our target markets, really, we we really start in the metro areas that are driving distance from here regionally. So Spokane, Portland, Seattle, even down into Boise and that. We hit into some of the regions where where we have flights that go in and we'll so we'll start, we'll start going there. But then what happens with digital media that's really interesting is is you, as you know, you you go into an area and you people figure out what you who you are and you're there, right? The the algorithms that are out there, if you're using your social media, if you're a target market for us, you might see those ads just about anywhere you go. And and so, you know, as as those algorithms kind of figure out out and and so we put in some parameters of what we're looking for and the type of people that we're trying to draw here. And then we let the technology work for us. And so that could happen anywhere. But but mostly we're targeting those those real core drive markets for now. That's there's so many people close enough that we can draw, so.
Questions, Kevin? Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
I've got one. Mr. Lewis, welcome to the Tri-Cities. Thank you for that presentation. I noticed on one of your slides, I don't think you mentioned it, it had a title River Shore Enhancement Council. I'm not personally very familiar with that. Could you give me a kind of a thirty second overview of that?
Yeah. Who chairs it? Okay, who's our who's our chair this year? We we convene it. And I'm trying to think who actually chairs that council. I wish I I wish I could tell you that, but it's essentially all of the different agencies. The the U U S A C, the sort of the core, I'm trying to say they they are part of that. The cities that are involved in around the counties and the ports and then any others that might have influence on specific discussions or whatever. We meet, there's actually two committees that work. There's a technical committee and a strategic committee that that work independently and together. So they'll work, they'll come together one month and then they'll work independently and have their meetings. And one is more looking at strategy and others actually getting things done. One of the projects that that group is working on right now is is the cable bridge lighting. So trying to get that upgraded and enhanced to some L E D lighting where you can program it and color it. It's more cost effective, more efficient, but you can do some really neat things with that. And so that's that's one of the projects that that, you know, I'm aware of that's going on. But they also, you know, get involved in discussions with things like the Horse Heaven Hills wind farm projects and what the effect effects of those might be. And and anyway, it's 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 a group of pretty prominent folks around the area that are involved in those agencies.
Fans of the of the shoreline in Franklin Benton County and the Dallas. Guys with that as well?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm trying to think who the chair is. Is it is it? It might, it might be John Amundson from Richland. I think it I think it might be John.
Thank you for the additional information regarding.
You bet, you bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, very much. Appreciate you coming and enjoying us and welcome, as Mayor Pro Tim Brink said, to the Tri-Cities. And as you make your way around the area, come look us up because we can show you the hidden treasures that have yet to be found in West Richland.
Yeah, there's a lot I've got to see out here.
Come out and get together with Eric Minn and Hall, our Community Development Director. And and let's put a tour together and we'll show you what we have to offer in our in our city.
Let's let's do that, Eric. Let's plan a time and just you can you show me everything that's going on here. I'm I'm like a sponge right now. I'm just soaking it all in and I feel like a little kid, too, because I get to experience life all over again. I've been in the Southwest for thirty one years. And we decided this was a great opportunity to come explore the Northwest and get involved in some new stuff and pretty thrilled about what we found here. So thanks for the invitation, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Council, we're going to go move on to our second presentation this evening, which is our first quarter financial presentation and we'll ask Finance Director Gwen to Aaron Gwen to take the take the mic.
All right. Thank you, Mary Gary. Good evening, Council and members of the community. This evening, I'm presenting the twenty twenty three first quarter financial report. We'll start with an overview and economic update, followed by specific information regarding the general fund and then the other funds. For the first overview, the econo- economy slide, we'll start with unemployment, which did increase to five point six percent for Benton County in the first quarter. And then one of the more concerning areas in the economy right now that everybody's talking about would be inflation. We've talked about this for over a year and we'll continue talking about it. One of the measures used is the Consumer Price Index or C P I, which nationally increased by five percent when comparing a March twenty twenty two to March of twenty twenty three. The Seattle Metro was higher at six point nine percent and that was April data. I couldn't find any March data. Both of those are still fairly high, but we're trending in the right direction. The nation saw its largest C P I index increase of June of twenty twenty two, which was at nine point one percent. So it's trending downward, which is the right direction. Locally, we look out the city's building activity, single family permits issued were seventeen for the first quarter of twenty twenty three compared to forty two for the same time period in twenty twenty two. Multi-family for the first quarter was six, where there was zero last year. This is another slide of the new single family permits. This shows the years in comparison, along with the green line showing the increase in valuation. This is a good example that demonstrates the volatility of new construction. You can see from this data that permits have been on a downward trend since twenty twenty one, but they tend to go up and down. Let's see. So the building revenue on, let's see, am I on the right slide? Family. Okay, so the slide before, the two slides before showed that the building permit revenue had decreased by twenty five percent that compared to the previous year. This is a bit of a different look at that, comparing revenues received versus what was budgeted. So the light blue area is the budgeted revenue compared to the gray black line of what we've actually received. We're under our projection at this point. At the end of March, the city collected a hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars compared to our budgeted projection of a hundred and eighty six thousand seven hundred and fifty three dollars. This will be a trend we monitor in the coming months and may need to be adjusted mid biennial budget review later this year. Now, this is looking at specific information regarding the general fund. This slide shows where the money comes from in terms of budget. You can see the majority is from taxes for the general fund. Sales tax, property tax and utility taxes, all with a pretty even split. This is a view of the general fund revenues collected. The city collected two percent less revenue in twenty twenty three compared to twenty twenty two. Both building permit revenue and charges for services, which is primarily a plan review associated with building. It saw big decreases at twenty five percent and thirty percent decrease respectively. Here's another view of the general fund revenues. This is comparing budget to what was yeah. Comparing the budget to what was collected and for the first quarter in twenty twenty three, the general funded collected ten percent of the budgeted revenues. Normally, we're looking to have at least an eighth of the budgeted revenue collected at this point, which is twelve point five percent. So this is an area, again, continue to monitor. These next three slides are going to look at our sales tax, which is a big portion of our general fund revenue. Sales tax decreased twelve percent compared to the prior year in the same quarter. In this one is another view. It looks at the different business sectors. Retail decreased thirteen percent, which represents forty percent of the general of the sales tax collected by the city and construction is another large sector which decreased by twenty six percent and represents twenty two percent of the sales tax collected by the city. This third slide is referencing compared to what was budgeted. The city collected four hundred and fifty four thousand twenty three dollars in the first quarter. Our budgeted projection. Uh, our budgeted projection was five hundred and forty two thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. So just over sixteen percent uh less was collected than what was projected. Another major revenue source in the general fund is utility taxes. Overall, utility tax revenue increased thirteen percent compared to twenty twenty two. These were increases to electric, water, sewer, stormwater and the solid waste as well. Uh, most of these increases uh can be attributed to weather and the new development that happened the prior two years as they're coming on board. Here's another look at the utility tax, um, something we've talked about before and it continues downward is the utility tax for or the telephone utility tax. This one uh quarter, uh, you saw an increase. A lot of that is due to the timing of the um the revenue were cash basis, so we received it. I believe most of it's the timing. Um, not a trend that we continue uh expect to continue. You'll all see also see the electric and gas um is a pretty significant increase. Um, gas in particular, if I remember correctly. Um, and a lot of that had to do with our cold winter and then the first quarters where we actually saw the tax uh collected from that. Another major general revenue, general fund revenue source is property tax, uh, which increased thirteen percent compared to the same period uh last year. Uh, the majority of this is collected in second and fourth quarters. So we'll see uh more of the trend. Again, the timing of payments um is usually what we see here. So where does your money go? Uh, the majority of the expenses in the general fund go to public safety uh at forty one percent. Um, this is a slight change from how it has been in the past. It's usually been a little bit higher, closer to forty five or forty eight. But the big change in this one, which we kind of saw last year, is a transfer, a big transfer out that we have, which we don't usually. But it was um the Well Free Project that we have going on. So that kind of skews some of these numbers slightly. Uh, here's another look by which department where the money goes. Uh, general fund expenditures were ten percent of the biennial budget. Again, we're looking for that same one eighth, so twelve and a half percent or less when it comes to expenditures. So doing well here. Um, the city has special revenue funds for streets, park, impact, criminal justice and library. This graph displays the major revenue sources for each fund. The street fund and park impact fund each saw decrease. Uh, park impact has a direct correlation with building activity, which is slowing down. Um, also decreasing is the fuel taxes uh remaining flat or slightly declining for several periods. Uh, this picture is a special revenue expenditures. For the most part, these remain fairly flat. Um, the street fund did see an a slight increase. Uh, you can see the little red bump just a little bit higher, but mostly due to equipment purchases. So it's like one time purchases that were in the budget. Uh, next, uh, we'll look at our capital project funds. Uh, this slide outlines the funds and their purpose. So we have Fund Three O One um with a REIT One and Three O Two for REIT Two, uh, street overlay. Fund Three Fifteen is our police facility, which is winding down. Uh, Fund Three Twenty One for Cooperative Way and Fund Three Fifty Five is our transportation improvement. Um, for revenues for the project funds, there wasn't a whole lot of activity. Or uh, like I said, our police fund and cooperative way fund are winding down. Uh, also, you'll notice the extremely large budget for Three O One REIT Fund. This is where the State Route Two Twenty Four project uh is uh budgeted. Um, but we anticipate carrying this project over the next several years. So you'll see this one kind of go up and down. Revenues for Fund Three O One and Three O Two are primarily from real estate excise tax. We saw thirty two percent decrease in the collection compared to the first quarter of last year. However, compared to budget, it's only down seven percent. Revenues for Fund Three Fifty Five are traffic impact fees. The city saw a decrease in collection compared to the first quarter of last year. These fees are related to building activity, which are also down. The twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget also hang on. Also includes an expected payment from the city of Richland for the Badger Mountain Development Traffic Mitigation Fees. Uh, this equates to more than what was half of budgeted. So we'll see that as like a one lump eventually. So I'm not too worried about this number at this point. Uh, expenditures for capital project funds for the first quarter were minimal for funds. Um, they should pick up as projects go into construction, in particular in Fund Three Fifty Five. We have the bombing range keen intersection project going. So we'll see those pick up in the next quarter. These last few slides take a closer look at our utility funds uh for revenue. Water collections increased four percent. Um, there are just over five thousand six hundred and fifty water utility accounts billed at March of twenty twenty three. Uh, sewer collections increased three percent, primarily due to the increase of new residents over the past few years. Uh, in the image of irrigation revenue increased by two percent for the first quarter. Uh, for stormwater collection, up two percent compared to first quarter of twenty twenty two. And the last uh utility revenue is solid waste collections, which was up thirteen percent, primarily due to rate increases um that we saw kind of last year and then again in this year. Uh, this final slide is a view of the utility fund expenditures. For the most part, these operating costs are increased to higher costs of materials and labor. Um, with the exception, we have some Fund Four Four One, Four Four Two, Four Five One and Four Five Two, which are project funds for the utilities. Um, and you don't see too much um in those going on. So a lot of this evening's uh presentation is negative news. Uh, one area I don't have a slide for, um, it has been insignificant in past several years, is the investment interest the city receives for invested cash. Uh, with inflation and interest rates increasing, uh, the city has received more revenue than it has in the past several years. Hopefully, this will help offset some of these decreases, um, which I think is why when I said um revenue for general fund was only down two percent. I think a lot of this can be attributed to the increase in the interest that we did receive. Um, for all funds across the city, for year twenty twenty three, um, the city budgeted a hundred and twenty seven thousand across all the funds to receive. So just for twenty twenty three, not the biennium. Um, that was we expected to see uh at the end of the first quarter. For the city received approximately three hundred and ninety five thousand in interest revenue. So like I said, it's offsetting some of these decreases. Um, that's about two hundred and sixty eight thousand above what we budgeted just in the first quarter. So for the entire year. So any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Much appreciated. And counsel, I'll I'll make note too in in our conversations that we have with our city managers and county administrators. Uh, our sister cities are seeing the same thing i- in regards to the impact of the economy the way that it is uh with houses uh decreasing in the building rates. Uh, you also have uh energy codes that uh have driven up costs. Uh, you know, a lot of a lot of that is is attributing to the numbers that we're seeing. As well as you keep in mind, you know, during the COVID, that was, you know, I I talked to a lot of different businesses. Businesses throughout the Tri-Cities have also experienced a decrease in their revenues. Uh, it seemed like during COVID twenty one and twenty two, when people weren't working, they were getting paychecks, they had extra money coming in. Uh, the spending kind of ramped up a bit. We then also we saw that we increased a lot of our retail sales tax because our people were at home. Uh, they were taking deliveries at home from Amazon and then point of delivery for sales tax. Uh, and then also your utilities, uh, more water is being used, more electricity being used, all of these different things too. So, you know, while it 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 shows a little bit on the n- negative side, I I believe it's an impact to the economy and coming out of of COVID as well. So with that, I'll uh give the floor to Councilmember Blue.
Oh, yes, I see the bad news. Uh, so so assuming assuming the sales tax will mean that we have about a quarter million dollar shortfall on our our sales tax income. Um, just for a point of reference, transit's three percent down so far this year consistently. And uh, from last year, it's it's that's not, that's that's showing the not below budget, but below uh last year's numbers and and that was a trend that started back in uh I think uh November, which was really surprising because it it hit Christmas. So um, I think the recession is here. Nobody has said it. I guess the question comes down to is, yes, we have increased um uh decrease in housing. Housing is our major, one of our major sales tax incomes. Um, yeah, we we just need to worry about tightening the belt coming up.
What else? Thank you, Eric. Much appreciated. Okay, counsel, that moves us to our consent agenda this evening, which consists of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, May sixteenth, twenty twenty three. An ordinance ten twenty three updating after hour service times for utilities. Resolution thirty three twenty three authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the cities of Richland, Pasco, Kennewick and West Richland with Franklin Conservation District for Public Education Program Services. Resolution thirty four twenty three amending the twenty twenty three twenty four salary schedule to change permit technician two to permit technician. Motion to accept the Belmont Business District Improvement Project as complete. And a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an MOU with the Greater Columbia Regional Municipalities opioid abatement council known as O A C. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to our consent agenda this evening? Seeing no one in person. Is there anyone virtually that would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? If so, raise a virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. Stephanie, as I've noted from the beginning of our meeting, there's a gentleman or excuse me, not gentleman, there's an individual. It's Texas iPhone that has had a hand up for the entire time. So I assume that that is just a mistake on that individual's part. So if you're virtually and you have your hand up and no meaning to speak, would you please lower your hand? So if you do want to speak, it's preacher time. We will be able to recognize you. So I will see no one at this point virtually. Stephanie, anyone else?
Um, I do not, although I do note that Texas iPhone did just lower his hand.
Thanks, Tex.
His or her.
iPhone, I appreciate it. Okay. All right, uh, counsel, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. This moves us to our first opportunity for citizens' comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. And if you would like to provide comments to the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with in-house participants first and then move to virtual. Anyone like to speak to items that are not on the agenda, please?
Onza Lot Ninety One, Section Six, Six O Five South, Forty Eighth Avenue, West Richland. Thank you, City Council, for this opportunity to comment on misinformation and disinformation. According to Governor Jay Inslee, is a threat to the functioning of our democracy. I am providing the city clerk with a packet requesting the city of West Richland invalidate regulatory ordinance ten twenty offers of dedication. File January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three with the Benton County Auditor. File number twenty twenty three dash zero zero one three eight seven E A S easements. Under color of title, caused from decades of plat of section six of Willamette Heights, misinformation and disinformation. It is my understanding offers of dedication, which are donations or gifts of private property to another person or government entity. According to R C W fifty eight point seventeen point oh two oh, definitions of dedication shall be evidenced by the owner by present presentment for filing filing of a final plat or short plat. The Lot Ninety One, Section Six of Willamette Height exhibit attached to ordinance ten twenty offers of dedication is a misinformation, disinformation composite of the Willamette Heights Association developer, who did not own the dedicated plat of section six of Willamette Heights and the described common law dedication rights of ways contained in the land patent deed. A survey plat is not a legal deed title. The legal description on the original land patent deed is Willamette Meridian, not Willamette Heights. In addition, a land patent is a deed to title, not a survey plat owned and developed by a developer. The USA owner of the official plat of the survey on file with the Bureau of Land Management, not Benton County, was not a developer. The USA sold individual lots to private citizens as undeveloped land with no infrastructure or utilities, according to laws of the United States of America Constitution. The USA Constitution prohibits taking a private property without just compensation. This was evidenced by more than twenty eminent domain deeds to the city in nineteen ninety eight for the bombing range road phase two project for section six. It appears the city has not promulgated written evidence of title prior prior to filing regulatory ordinance ten twenty offers of dedication, which was recorded as access and utility easements from the public city of West Richmond to the public. Land patent owners under color of title need the cloud removed from their property to move forward. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else in-house? Seeing no one, I see that Tex's iPhone is have hand raised. Stephanie, would you please unmute individual and you'll have three minutes to address counsel?
Hello, this is Tex and and I'm just asking for some help. Um, I live on Thirty Eighth Avenue, South Thirty Eighth Avenue here, and we have a problem with the speeding going on here. Um, it's constant all day long. My wife works in in a in our office, home office, and her window faces there and we watch the trucks go up and down all day long and the cars stop way over thirty miles an hour. And so we've we've contacted the police several times out here in in the community to ask them to see if they couldn't help, come write some tickets, do something to get us a stop. Uh, and we've been to actually to the new police station out there, which I'll say is really a really a nice station. But uh, we've got no relief from it. Um, day after day, it runs day and night, and I'm not worried about the volume because we're from Seattle. But I'm what I'm worried about is there's a thirty mile an hour speed limit and that's in our code, in the city code, chapter ten. And it's being run at forty, fifty, sixty. We have drag racing going on. We have uh bikes out here wheeling in and and dragging, running around and and passing people on the road and someone's gonna get killed. But but we're not getting any relief. The little sign that goes out that said here going too fast, that little uh trailer, that doesn't work. But I what I want to know is, what kind of help can we get? Can the police officers no longer give somebody that pulls someone over for a ticket? You know, um, and and how do we get this stopped? Because yes, I I was amazed to hear that forty one percent of our general fund went to the police department and yet we can't get something as simple as traffic laws followed. And this has gotten so bad. Last night at just before two o'clock in the morning, we had one of the little um you know, those foreign cars that they they the kids like to soup up out here pulling doing donuts up here. And you can hear it, walks out of dead sleep. And then they raced up around thirty eighth up across by the fire station. You can hear it all all through town here. And then down bombing range and then down Van Gisens and went out to the highway out there and spent five minutes doing donuts out there in the on the highway. You can hear it, you know, like you're watching your TV in your front room. So how do we get this stopped? What do we have to do to get our police department to stop and start taking care of it? Because that's part of the safety in this town. And what do we have to do to get them to do that? I mean, I know the states, all they have, all these different rules now that shouldn't be in place, but are that we can't chase people and things. And but we can, we still unable to pull people over for tickets and ride them? And that's just what I want to know. I want to know if the city council get this under control. The volume doesn't matter. Don't care about that. But semi trucks and and dump trucks and cars flying, you know, fifty, sixty miles an hour up and down this thirty mile an hour road and no one stops it. And it happens all day long, every day at bar time closing. It becomes a drag racing thing or after twelve to two o'clock or so. And we need. And we need to get that stopped somehow, and I know my neighbors have contacted the police also, so, I'm just trying to get something taken care of, so it's safe environment, so someone doesn't get killed out here, pulling out of apartments, or someone doesn't get killed back in another driveway. I mean, after all, it's a residential neighborhood.
Hey, thank you very much for your comments, your time is expired, however, the chief is present and I'm sure has taken note as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I see no one else virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Then we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh, items eight A and B, which are a public hearing and a resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement plan. And I'll ask our Public Works Director Roscoe Slade presenting staff report this evening. Mr. Slade?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, it's our annual update to our six-year transportation improvement plan. We do this every year, uh, on an annual basis, we're required to have it done by July first, we'll have a schedule this year. Um, the public has a couple opportunities to comment on the program, the first is here before council, and then there'll also be regional meetings where all the cities have their uh, six-year tips where the public can comment and see all the, all the plans. The important thing is that uh, these projects are listed on this, on these plans, makes them eligible for both state, federal, and our transportation impact fees, which are the three fifty-five fund. Um, this has gone through the SEPA review, this program, received the DNS issued back in May fourth. Um, I've included in the packet last year's six-year tip along with this year's proposed one, so it makes it easier to uh, see the difference between it. I'll kind of summarize the changes from last year to this year. Uh, a couple projects were removed, the bombing range and Keen Road Intersection Modification Project has been removed. The funds have already been obligated, it's currently under construction, so it comes off the, the plan. The SR two-two-four pathway project was a pathway between Keene and Sixty-second. That project's been moved, but the scope of work's been incorporated into the SR two-two-four Red Mountain, so it won't be done as a separate project. Um, some of the projects that were added to it, uh, if you recall, the bombing range, Mount Adams View intersection, uh, was last on our tip back in twenty twenty, for the last four years, three years, it's been not included. Originally, when we looked at it, it didn't meet warrants, I believe it'll meet warrants in the next six years, and so we put it back onto the plan. Um, the other two items are Dallas and Arena Road Intersection Modifications. Uh, this has to do with impacts that were identified from the city of Richland's Badger Mountain South. The next council meeting, you'll see an interlocal agreement where Richland will be uh, providing city of West Richland funds to complete this, a portion of this project. And the other one is Keen Road Kennedy Road Intersection Modification Phase One. Again, this is an improvement that is identified based on impacts uh, from the city of Richland's Badger Mountain South, so there'll be, you'll see that at the next meeting. And lastly, uh, we modified a project Rupert Road, if you look at that, the alignment is looking at changing it. This has to do with information that's coming out of the Lewis and Clark Master Plan uh, effort that'll be completed later this year, first to next year, so we're looking at realigning Rupert and how Belmont goes into that intersection. So uh, before we adopt this, we're required to have a public hearing and take public comments on the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, six-year transportation improvement program.
Thank you, Roscoe. With that, I will open the public hearing up at six fifty-four, and if you would like to provide comment to this item on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll start with in-house first and go to virtual. Anybody? Nobody here, okay, nobody in-house, anybody virtually like to speak to the public hearing for the twenty-four, twenty-nine, six-year transportation improvement plan? Raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone to be recognized. Stephanie, I see no one virtually, do you?
I do not.
That, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty-four. Council, a resolution thirty-five twenty-three adopting the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement plan, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass resolution thirty-five dash twenty-three adopting the city's twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement program.
Second.
Motion and a second, council, is there any questions that have not previously been addressed in Roscoe's staff report? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries, thank you, council. Moving on to items eight C and eight D, or a public hearing and a resolution to adopt a frontage improvement waiver for lot seventy-four, section six, fifty-eighth and Everett Street. And with that, we'll ask Public Works Director Roscoe Slade to presenting staff report this evening, Roscoe?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, got a little bit of a packet here before you, but this is a waiver uh, for frontage improvements associated with a building permit for a non-commercial shop for lot seventy-four out in section six, this property fronts both Fifty-eighth and Everett Street, um, where there are currently gravel roads unimproved, the nearest pavement is on the north boundary of this property. Uh, the property owner has requested a frontage waiver, uh, there's five different things, but basically building a rural roadway on two frontages. Uh, staffs reviewed this, there's uh, in the summary, it gets into, is this detrimental to the best interests of the city and all that? We've reviewed it, uh, and it, it really doesn't seem fair for one property owner to build six hundred and sixty foot of frontage just to build a non-commercial shop, feel it's more fair or appropriate uh, to grant the frontage waiver, and that's what council, or what staffs recommending council do, conditioned on the property owner, uh, waiving is right for future LID if it was formed for these roadway improvements, and then also dedicating the road right-of-way, currently it's an access easement that was there, so um, that, that's what's before you, I'll just kind of leave it at that, but it's, it's uh, basically a, a building permit associated with a building permit that doesn't meet the exemptions in the municipal code.
Thank you, Roscoe. With that, I will open the public hearing up at six fifty-seven, and if anyone would like to comment on this public hearing item on the agenda this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, we'll start with anybody in the audience. Seeing no one in the audience, if we have anybody virtually, I see one hand raised, and that would be from a Mr. Roy Cohen. Uh, we will go ahead and, you're unmuted, and you'll have three minutes to provide comments, if you would, please, go ahead. Can't hear you. Are you there? Give me a test one, two. Are you back, okay, try it again now that you're unmuted. Uh, sound like Mickey Mouse, I can't hear you. I'm sorry, still have no audio from you. We'll give you one more try, and if we can't hear you, we'll have to move on.
Can they call in, Stephanie? Won't you give her the information to call in?
Yes, I was just gonna ask Melissa, uh, Jessica, or not Melissa, Melissa, the other Jessica, here we go again. Stephanie, do you have the phone number I can give them? We're working on seeing if we can get you here by way of telephone so you can uh, make comment this evening, so bear with me, please. Matter of fact, Stephanie, what I could do is just ask them to call my city cellphone if that would be all right with you? Melissa? Jessica, excuse me, is that okay? Yeah. Yeah, I can do it on my microphone here.
So the phone number to call in is one two five three two one five eight seven eight two. Again, that number is one two five two two one five eight seven, oh, sorry, one two five three two one five eight seven eight two.
Roy, you can come in hopefully. Roy, would you please call the phone number that was just given to you, we'll give that number to you one more time?
One two five three two one five eight seven eight two. You can also find the phone number on the city's website.
Jessica? How do you recommend handling such situations?
Um, I mean, I don't think there's any definitive answer, you're required to allow people to have an audit with authority. Sorry, I wasn't pressing my button. Um, I, I think um, you've, we've given him the phone number a few times, we cannot hear him, he's had the opportunity to speak to council. And I think after a reasonable period of time, it's probably safe to move on. I don't know what else we do.
We have given the opportunity unsuccessfully on the side of the coin. Okay, based on, based on Jessica's. Yeah, okay, thank you very much, we'll go ahead, based on Jessica's legal opinion, we've made every effort to, that individual be heard. So we will close the public hearing at seven oh two and move on. Resolution thirty-six twenty-three granting a frontage improvement waiver, lot seventy-four, section six, South Fifty-eighth Avenue and Everett Street. Do I have a motion? It's a long, it's a long one, so.
I move to pass resolution thirty-six dash two-three granting a frontage improvement waiver for frontage improvements to both South Fifty-eighth Avenue and Everett Street per WRMC twelve point zero four point zero six zero for the property owner of Benton County Parcel one dash zero six nine eight dash two zero two dash zero zero seven four dash zero zero zero, associated with a building permit for a new non-commercial shop in the parcel conditioned on, one, the property owner waiving all rights to protest against a future local improvement district or LID, providing for the construction of said frontage improvements by executing, executing and recording at property owner's cost a city attorney-approved waiver of protest agreement in compliance with RCW three five point four three point one eight two, and two, the property owner executing and recording at property owner's cost, a deed to the city of West Richland via a statutory warranty deed, twenty-five foot of road right-of-way along the frontage of both South Fifty-eighth Avenue and Everett Street, together with a fifteen-foot by fifteen-foot triangle of road right-of-way at the intersection of South Fifty-eighth Avenue and Everett Street, together with a twelve-foot utility easement adjacent to the dedicated road right-of-way as shown in Exhibit A of the attached resolution prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, final building permit inspection.
Second.
Is there anyone that has any questions that haven't been previously answered by Roscoe's staff report this evening? Seeing no one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you, council. Moving on to items eight E and F, or a public hearing and a resolution to approve a utility easement vacation for vacation zero zero one dash twenty twenty-three, and with that, we'll ask our planner Alicia Ransome to present her staff report this evening. Alicia, thank you.
Good evening, um, the easement vacation proposal you have in front of you is, um, the applicant is John Nissen. He lives at sixty-one twenty-three Ironton Drive. Um, the legal description is Willamette Heights, section six, lot one forty-two. Um, the easement that they're looking to vacate is uh, the west twenty feet of the east thirty feet, and the north twenty feet of the south thirty feet of their lot. Um, if the legal description isn't, it's hard to get your, get your head around, um, there is an exhibit map in attachment two, as well as a vicinity map in attachment three for your reference. Um, the easement is the thirty-foot eas, uh, thirty-foot easements recorded on the plat of Willamette Heights, section six, rather than the historic offers of dedication. Um, the um, staff routed the app, the application to franchise utilities for any comments. Um, we received uh, regular comments from Zipley, from other utilities, either saying that it was out of the area or just commenting on where they had services in the vicinity. Um, and Public Works approved the utility easement vacation via memo. Um, the staff recommends that the easement be vacated, and that the vacation of the easement would not unduly jeopardize the health, safety, welfare, or public good. Um, additionally, the retention of the easement no longer serves any useful purpose. Um, and the suggested motion is on the first page of the staff report.
Alicia? That, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at, like, push the right button here. Seven oh seven, if you'd like to make comment in regards to this agenda item this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll start with the audience here first. Seeing no one in-house, anyone virtually like to speak to this item on the agenda this evening? I see Mr. Cohen has raised his hand again. Stephanie, you want to unmute him, and please identify yourself, name and address for the record. And you'll have same phone from last time, but we can't hear you. Could you please call in? The caller in is on the city website, or one more time, I'll read the number to you. Stephanie, would you please read the phone number to call in one more time, please?
Uh, yes, the phone number is one two five three two one five eight seven eight two.
Couple minutes to call in. Stephanie, is your phone ringing?
I, I do not see anyone added via phone yet.
And again, Jessica, I will ask you how to proceed based on the efforts that we made to give this individual opportunity to speak in a public hearing. However, they have a difficult time with their audio.
Again, Mr. Mayor, you've given a um, reasonable opportunity to participate in the public hearing, um, this public hearing was um, properly noticed, this individual could have come in person, but obviously chose to participate via Zoom. Um, and uh, we've tried to make all alternatives available to him to be heard, um, to no avail, so I think it's safe to go ahead and move on.
Thank you, with that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh nine.
One minute?
Res- Resolution thirty-seven twenty-three utility easement vacation, vacation double oh one twenty- Resolution thirty-seven twenty-three utility easement vacation, vacation double oh one twenty twenty-three. Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass resolution three-seven dash two-three authorizing the vacation of the thirty-foot utility easement for file VACA zero zero one dash two zero two-three.
Second. Motion and a second. Counsel, all in favor, say aye. Question, please. Yeah, anybody have any questions of Alicia in regards to anything that she hasn't said in the report? Counsel member Moran.
Thank you. I just have one brief question. You said that there had been comment on this. I was wondering, do we, I thought we normally would put that in the packet or because it was so, um, generic and normal, is that why we didn't get in our packet?
I mean, comments from utilities unless they're significant, I'm like, oh, we, well, probably wouldn't make it to this point if they have actual facilities in the easement we're proposing to vacate. But if that were the case, we would let you know about those. But typically, if it's, if it's standard things or no comment, we don't include those.
Okay, thank you. That's what I figured.
Anyone else? Mayor Pro Tem Brink?
Thank you. And, uh, we received no comments and just to clarify from any citizens.
No, no citizen public comment from this.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries and amiss. Thank you, council. Moving on to items eight I as an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget and a motion to award the Everett Street Pressure Sewer Project. And we'll ask Public Works Director Roscoe Slade. Did we miss one? G and H, okay. My bad. Excuse me. I'm checking them off before we get going here. All right, so moving back up to items eight G and eight H, public hearing and resolution to approve utility easement vacation for vacation zero zero two twenty twenty-three. And Alicia, you have the floor again for your staff report.
Um, this, the easements that have been requested to be vacated, this one's a little bit different. We don't typically see things like this. Um, but the, the site is eight oh three Creer Way and it's located in Western Ridge Phase Two, lot thirty-five. Um, there were a couple of things that after, after plating, but now that it's time to develop, um, they've requested some easement vacations. One of them is an easement relocation. That's the irrigation easement. They'll be relocating it while they've already dedicated the new easements. The recording numbers are in your packets. Um, along with, uh, twelve-foot utility easement. So they're relocating the irrigation easement in order to be able to, um, better utilize the site. And then the storm drainage easement. Um, I know that council member Bloom had a question about this and, uh, Roscoe answered that in the email. But just for everybody's information, the, um, the original plan was for the storm drainage for the, for the property to be included on lot thirty-five. However, there was some basalt, um, in that area that prevented the construction of the actual storm drainage infrastructure. So they redesigned and, um, the, and sent the storm drainage to the, uh, treatment area that's in, on the corner of Paradise and Van Geeson. Is that correct?
Paradise and Creer, close.
Paradise and Creer. It's, it's in that area. It's closer to Paradise Way. Um, so they redesigned it. They went through all that process. And now this, the storm drainage easement doesn't serve any purpose because they, they changed what the design was. The, again, we, um, let's see, again, we routed everything to, uh, utilities and they had the opportunity to comment. Um, and then Public Works also had an opportunity to review and they approved via memo. Um, the, the vacation of the easement, the staff recommends the easements be vacated and the vacation of the easements would not unduly jeopardize the health, safety, welfare, or public good. Additionally, the retention of the, the easements, um, no longer serves any useful public purpose. Anything that will need to be retained has already been rededicated, um, with the dedication of that five-foot irrigation easement. That's it.
That will go ahead and open the public hearing at seven fifteen. If you'd like to provide comment to the utility easement vacation this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one in house, we'll ask anybody virtually if they have any comments in regards to this vacation. Raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone. Seeing no one, Stephanie, I do not. Do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
I oppose the public hearing at seven fifteen. Resolution thirty-eight twenty-three utility easement vacation zero zero two dash twenty twenty-three. Counsel, have a motion, please?
I move to pass resolution thirty-eight twenty-three authorizing the vacation of the twenty-foot storm drain easement and five-foot irrigation easement for file VACA oh oh two two oh two-three.
Second. Second, any questions of Alicia not previously addressed? I see Councilmember Bloom.
I, I guess Alicia, the, the one question, still the drainage, um, is there another easement we've replaced? Or, or was that, was the, was retention based in an existing easement that?
So this was a plat that got, uh, accepted by council as complete, but all the work wasn't done because they put a performance bond up. And while they were constructing, digging in that area to put, that's when they hit the basalt outcropping. And so I had to go back to the engineer, redesign it. And so the swale that's at the corner of Paradise and Creer was enlarged to handle the flow. And so there's no, there's nothing in the twenty-foot storm drainage easement. So the developer's now asking to vacate it because it's not being used.
Thank you. And, and just for clarification, the reason I brought the question forward was when we had this plat come forward, there was an issue whether it was enough capacity, whether it was going to overflow Van Geeson and a few other things. So it just seemed strange. So, thank you.
What else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries and amiss. Thank you, council. Now moving on to eleven twenty-three, amending a twenty twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget and a motion to award Everett Street Pressure Sewer Project. Public Works Director Roscoe Slade, please, your staff report.
So normally, uh, awarding a project would go on the consent agenda, but since bids, uh, exceeded our fund balance to pay for it, uh, you've got a joint staff report with a budget amendment and, uh, that needs to occur to be able to award the project. So this is the Everett Street Pressure Sewer Project. Um, the engineer, it came in, we only received one bid for the project. It was exceeded the engineer's estimate. Uh, the engineering staff, uh, had contacted fourteen contractors to try to understand why did we only receive one and why were the bids higher? Uh, the majority of the contractors stated they were too busy, too much work going on in the area, too small of a project, uh, risk with groundwater. Um, and the one bid that we did receive, uh, bid it because they will be doing subdivision work adjacent to this location uh, and said that the elevated price that they gave is because they expect to have to do this project on overtime with their employees. Uh, the other change is originally that was planned to be glued together, Schedule forty PVC. The manufacturer for these grinder pumps now is recommending a poly pipe that's, uh, glue, glue jointed or welded butt joints. Um, so that increased the cost there. So after reviewing this, uh, the question was asked, uh, by council member Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Brink is what's the probability if we reject all bids and put it out for bid that we'd receive lower bids? And I said low. He asked for a percentage. I said ninety-nine point nine percent. Um, so if we go out to bid, I don't believe we'll get any bids. And if we do get a bid, it's seriously high probability that it'll be much higher. The big concern is the one property owner has already paid their connection fees. It's already bought the grinder pump. Uh, and they are paying to pump their septic tank at about six hundred dollars a pop every three weeks. So delaying the project any further would cause the residents. So staff's recommending that we award the project that, uh, and approve the budget amendment. There is funds in the four fifty-two fund to cover the additional fifty thousand for the project.
Thank you, Roscoe. Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance eleven dash two-three amending the city of West Richland two zero two-three dash two zero two-four biennial budget amendment three. And I move to award the Everett Street Pressure Sewer Project to the low bidder. Goodman and Melonbacher in the amount of ninety-six thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars, eighty-six cents, including sales tax and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Second.
Pushing a second, but I am going to ask if anybody has comment in regards to this item on the agenda this evening from the audience or by virtual. I see no one in the audience. Or do I see virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, do you have any questions that haven't previously been answered by staff? Councilman Bloom?
somewhat personal, is the connection fee now higher?
Pushing the wrong button doesn't help. Um, no. So it's based on the square foot in area. That question was also asked by Mayor Pro Tem Brink. So it will just take more people connecting to get our investment back into this. So when people connect, it's still the same current connection fee. This square foot in area charge will still be the same unless council amends it in the future, but it wouldn't be just because of this project. So short answer is no.
Long short answer. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. How many more people would have to enter into this in order for us to get close to making the money back?
Uh, I want to say five. I think, I think they're, the, they pay the normal sewer connection fee. It's a square foot in area charge that, um, I think this one property owner paid fifteen thousand dollars. So, um, I guess six, six or seven would need to connect.
So that would be total six or seven? And how many, it's just currently one?
That is correct.
And we're not requiring people to connect at this point?
That is correct.
How many people currently would be, ha- how many houses would be along this line at this point able to connect?
I, I don't have that number, but there's several short plats where those two and a half acres been subdivided. I think we asked all twenty or whatever. I don't know. I don't have the number in front of you, but it was more than, um, to re- recuper investment in the future. But we don't require, the code says that we can require them to connect in thirty days notice. Uh, the past practice has been unless they have a problem with their septic and the health department gets involved, we don't get involved in requiring them. Uh, the other one that would trigger them to connect is if they short platted, then they would have to, both their existing house and the new lot created would have to connect to this pressure sewer.
So, sorry, you were saying that there's twenty-ish, not an exact, but twenty-ish that could potentially connect currently?
There is a total of sixteen and a, sixteen, two and a half acre lots, and some of them have been subdivided. So I would say we're north of twenty lots that could connect in the future. And that's just going to fifty-fourth. It could be extended further east to the other side of, east side of fifty-fourth and include additional lots.
Okay, I, I didn't want to count our eggs before they're in a basket or however that saying goes, but just based off of the line that our budget is going to be paying for is what I was looking at. I, I believe that you've answered that. Thank you.
Councilmember Feto?
I think it's Mayor. Um, I'm going to vote yes based on your professional expert opinion on what the outlook of, if we denied this and run out for bids again. I will say though, I'm a little angry that this contractor's holding us hostage on this. This is basically a bid to say, I don't want the job, but if you give it to me, you're going to pay my, my price. And that bothers me, especially on the heels of Finance Director Gwynn's finance report. Um, but again, based on your expert opinion that if you went out, if we deny this, we won't get done. We've got this resident answer. You're already pumping this thing three times, uh, you know, three, every three weeks. But I just want to be on record that I do not like this. Thank you.
Feto, Mayor Pro Tem Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too shared some concerns i- in my questions, uh, posed to, uh, Mr. Slade. Uh, but once again, similar to Councilmember Feto, I was, uh, reassured and I think moved in a positive direction based on what the long-term uh, uh, resolution of this work will be. Yes, we're making an investment. Yes, we're spending funds. But in the long term, it's going to, uh, serve our citizens out in that area. But I have some, uh, you know, reservations about the, uh, the approach used by the contractor. I'll just say that. Thank you though, Mr. Slade, for your prompt and thorough responses to my multitude of questions.
Councilmember Bloom?
Uh, yes, because I own property by which the line will pass, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right, very good. So noted. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? With one abstain, with one abstention, Councilmember Bloom. We don't have any new business or unfinished business this evening. So this is the opportunity for our second citizens' public comment. And if you'd like to provide comment to the city council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes to make comment.
My name is John Clark. I live at four sixty-one South Fifty-Eighth Avenue, West Richland, lot seventy-four, Will, Willamette Heights six. Uh, I'm the one that applied for the permit for the garage, not a shop. And in the year, city's workings, it says shop, assorted buildings, whatever, nothing about a garage where I have to sign a waiver. I feel like I was forced to sign a waiver in order to get my garage built. Um, it says in your mission statement there about seeking continuous citizen involvement through transparency. Well, when I applied for the permit, didn't know anything about having to pump my septic, which I did, cost me a bunch of money. And then when my contractor went to go get the permit, the city all of a sudden tells him, we can't give you the permit because we got to have a waiver or something about the, the road. No, nothing in the application. So your transparency isn't. Um, so and now my voting rights were stomped on because now I can't vote, um, to not allow an LID because the last time I voted no for an LID up there, we found a contractor that was going to do it for roughly about half the price at our end of the road. Now I can't vote no. I can vote yes, but I can't vote no. And I think that's wrong because now my voting rights are taken away. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Matt Caranza, six oh five South Forty-eighth in West Richland. I'd like to make a statement about one of the vacations that they're vacating a thirty-foot easement from the plat of section six of Willamette Heights. In that packet I gave to the city council tonight, there is meet Willamette Heights Association. That is, is who filed the plat. The landowner of that plat was the United States government. And I've talked to the BLM and the law examiners. The Willamette Heights Association is not affiliated with the thing. It was a plan that went south. And you might want to look at that book, that packet I sent you tonight. There's like a one paragraph, paragraph in there. It's long. And it gives the explanation how it was founded and how it is not a legal plat. It should not be. The auditor recorded it in error. There are RCWs out there for that. I'm working with state auditor to get this corrected. But before you keep using that thirty-foot plat of section six, you need to look at the legality of that plat. Thank you.
On virtually this evening, final comments? Seeing no one, Stephanie, do you see anybody?
I do not, no.
Uh, then we'll go ahead and move on to staff and council reports and we'll go ahead and start with staff. Chief Gregel?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, tonight I'll just address the traffic complaint on thirty-eighth. So obviously, council, you know that we take all of our complaints really seriously. While I was sitting here tonight, I looked up our stats on Tyler. The last three months, three tickets have been written on thirty-eighth. That doesn't include traffic stops that our ticket wasn't written. I'm just letting you know that we're, we are, we are in the air and I plan on doing extra patrols as we can. So I just wanted to just let everybody know that. And, um, you know, we, we address it throughout the city, so.
Thank you, chief. Much appreciated. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council members, I just wanted to give you an update. The survey that is out there right now has been going well. Uh, we did have a bit of a hiccup with our link that we had up on Facebook. So if you filled it out on Facebook, please go back out and, uh, do it again. Um, there was a bit of a glitch there that we've got fixed. So it will be open for another week. It's going to close on the thirteenth. And the plan is, is that we bring that back and report back to council shortly after that, uh, to give you guys the, the four one one on all what came back and, and, and the information that we gathered on that. But it's, it's going well. It's providing a lot of good information thus far. And like I said, it's still open. So if you haven't taken it, or if you took it on Facebook, go back and do it again. If you haven't taken it, please take it. It's a great survey that provides a lot of input to our city council. Will help guide the city council into the future and help us, uh, set priorities, help the council set priorities as well. So that's all I have for this evening.
So if an individual took it on Facebook and it did get through after the, the glitch was repaired, it will not allow you to take again. Is that correct?
I don't know if it would prohibit you. I, if your answers are going to be the same, Ron's going to go through and screen those out. So if you're going to go through and retake it again, and you took it before and it actually recorded, he'll go through and filter out those because if your answer is the exact same, you're saying the exact same words. Um, it, it'll be, yep, the IP address, yep.
Thank you. Staff, or let's see, uh, council, comments, Councilmember Fettow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this afternoon, I was installed as, uh, newest board member for the West Richland Area Chamber of Commerce. And wanted to invite everybody tomorrow. Roscoe is speaking, I'm assuming on construction in the city. Uh, but Roscoe be presenting tomorrow at the West Richland Chamber Luncheon, uh, twelve o'clock at the Mayfield Gathering Space.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to report on the most recent Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting. It was a bit of a task to try and make sure that we could get enough people at the meeting to reach a quorum so that we could vote on the new bylaws. But we did manage to get it within the last maybe five, ten minutes of when our meeting was supposed to be. So we did get that. Um, I will say prior to that, we did have some reports from the staff and one of them, which was encouraging, is that Washington State, and Roscoe, I'm sure you've heard this, uh, has over obligated for the region's obligation authority. And so our region is eligible for redistribution of funds from other states, possibly if those states don't meet the obligations by August first. I'm sure you're keeping an eye on it. It may not go specifically to us, but it could go to Washington State and the region, if I'm correct. Um, there is also a map that Benton Franklin Council Government has based on all of the comp plans from the different cities. In May and June, they are meeting with the jurisdictions to go over the map. Um, making certain that the urbanized areas will include all of the boundaries of the cities, including West Richland, which currently it does not, if I remember correctly. Um, finally, they are doing some interesting hiring right now with Benton Franklin Council of Governments. One of their new hires, Elizabeth Garcia Mitchell, I believe. Uh, she is, uh, working towards hiring planning interns because there's such a small amount of interns being able to be hired right now. So that I thought was an interesting solution, hiring interns to meet that need. Also, that Tri-City Mobility Action Group Walk Audit, I believe, is, I want to say next week in West Richland. I could be wrong. Um, I don't know if Roscoe is familiar with the specific or Eric, if is familiar with the specific dates for the walk audit in West Richland. Is that next week?
Eric will look, but will last, let's go to comment in regards to the cog and the funding source that they're both going to look. Okay.
I just thought those were, um,
The walk audit is, the walk audit will be June thirteenth at ten AM.
Excellent. So a week from today. Excellent. Um, other than that, I will say that the bylaws revisions did get completed. So hopefully, our next meeting, which will be the sixteenth, we'll be able to finally vote for a new executive board, which was supposed to have happened earlier this year.
Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, I want to congratulate David for being the new, um, West Richardson Chamber Board Member. I think he'll find it a very exciting position to have. And, um, um, it should be lots of fun for him to be part of the chamber like that. Um, second, I would like to once again invite everybody to the Bill Shane, the renaming of the Senior Center to the Bill Shane, um, Senior Center, and that's going to be Saturday at eleven thirty at the Senior Center. And the ceremony, that's when the ceremony starts and then we'll have a barbecue afterwards. And so we're inviting people to come out. Um, we do have, um, several people sitting here. Roscoe will speak, Mayor Protem will speak. Um, then we have the city, um, Tom, Police Chief Tom, he's going to be speaking. So it's, um, it's going to be an exciting time and, um, there's probably around forty people from Bill Shane's family that will be attending. So, um, I look forward to seeing everybody that can make it. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Bloom?
Even though I'm the alter on the Hanford Advisory Board, I get the opportunity to plan next year's future this coming Thursday when the Executive Committee of the Hanford Advisory Board will meet to scheme out next year. And I will be the vice chair of the LID committee. Now, when I was in high school, a LID was well-defined. But, um, that's the land and infrastructure, um, committee for hab. Um, and so, Mr. Smart, if you are engaged, you, you can, I, I, I invite you to, to possibly look at the notes out of that coming up.
Mayor Protem Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a couple of things I've mentioned before, the Association of Washington City's annual conference is taking place, uh, June twentieth through twenty-third in Spokane. Uh, we have the opportunity to, uh, designate voting delegates uh, to the business meeting, which takes place on Thursday, the twenty-second. Each city can name three voting delegates. I think at this point, uh, Councilmember Moran and Councilmember Fettow are playing to take part in the conference along with myself. So I would suggest the three of us be named voting delegates because there will be decisions made with regard to A W C bylaws as well as electing board of director, uh, members during that meeting. Um, I will be at the Senior Center on Saturday. Uh, Councilmember Hayes, I'll be representing the city in the absence of the mayor. Um, I will also be at the chamber function tomorrow. And I'm looking forward to seeing Councilmember Fettow's reign, uh, begin tomorrow as well. And of course, um, one other thing I'll mention, Fourth of July is coming up. Um, we have, uh, several regulations with regard to the discharge of fireworks. I kindly ask that our citizens, uh, be familiar with those and follow them. But there is a slight secondary concern I, I'd just like to bring up. I'm not requesting any feedback or, or anything at this point. But, uh, there's an event planned on, uh, July fourteenth and fifteenth, Thunder on the Mountain, which also features fireworks. So there's just a little bit concerned of having potentially five days of fireworks within about a two-week period uh, within the city. Uh, just something that I think we as council members, you know, will have to, uh, you know, just, uh, keep in mind in case there's some uh, feedback received from our citizens with regard to that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you for chairing the meeting last week while I was, or last meeting while I was in a, a conference. I, I provided you all with, uh, some information in regards to a, uh, worldwide association that we have put together from community, Energy Communities Alliance, uh, group of municipalities with nuclear facilities in Europe. They call themselves G M F Europe. And then, uh, Canadian Association of Nuclear Host Communities is CANAC. Uh, we had a, uh, conference in Paducah, Kentucky, uh, and had discussions of, uh, the opportunities of new nuclear with, uh, small module reactors. And, uh, uh, there was trades as well as the vendors who, who produce these products. Uh, X Energy, Gen X, and so many other of the companies that were, that were there at this conference. Uh, then we're going to also have another, uh, global partnership meeting in, uh, Vienna again this year, uh, to discuss the challenges of the, uh, depository of spent nuclear fuels. And hopefully we can get some lessons learned in different directions that, uh, the Europeans have gone, uh, far ahead of us in regards to the, uh, uh, what to do with our spent nuclear fuel and how to deal with it. So, uh, more information to come in regards to that. So there was just a little read for you in regards to, uh, what went up to and the chair of the Community, uh, Energy Communities Alliance. Uh, so with that, I think that about wraps it up for the evening. And with all that, I'll, uh, adjourn the meeting at seven forty. Thank you, council.